Good evening and welcome to the January 14, 2014 city council meeting. Carol, would you be as kind to call roll?
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here. Mayor Ruane and Councilmember O'Connell are excused with absence or absent and excused both and notice. Thank you, Carol. At this time, if we could have, we have two folks in the audience that are here with somebody from HIP Housing that's going to give us a presentation, and we would like to ask if I could, Kyle and Kendall, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. Okay, item number three, announcements. There are none, but now obviously we have the presentation, which we've already met two of our special guests here today, but I'd like to go ahead and receive a presentation from the Human Investment Project HIP Housing, which Kate will go ahead and talk about their programs and housing statistics in this San Mateo County, please.
Hello, my name is Kate Comfort-Hart. I am Executive Director of HIP Housing. We provide creative affordable housing solutions throughout San Mateo County, and I'm here tonight for a couple of reasons, and I'm just going to run over and start my PowerPoint. First is to do a calendar presentation for the HIP Housing Annual Calendar. The second is to talk a little bit about the crisis that San Mateo County is facing in affordable housing, and then finally to talk about why HIP Housing is a good answer for that crisis and the work that we've done here in San Bruno. So to start the presentation, I want to call your attention to the calendar that each of you have gotten. This is our annual calendar. Each year, we ask schoolchildren from throughout the county to draw pictures and tell us what home means to them. Then we have to pick 12, and it's always really, really hard, but this year is really special because we had three winners on our calendar contest that were from the city of San Bruno. The first is in April, I mean in March, the second is in April, and then the third one is at the very end because we've actually added a 13th month because we had to pick one more. So I'd like to call up two of our winners tonight to read their quote and show you what housing means to them from the eyes of a child. So Kendall and Kyle, can you come over and join me, please? So we'll start with Kyle, and Kyle is March, so if you go to March, you'll see him there.
I can't wait to come home every day to my safe and cozy house. It makes me happy to help my little brother read and play, be creative. We can also be really silly, too.
Perfect. Good job, Kyle. So Kendall is April, so if you just turn one more page.
My name is Kendall Mendoza. I am in first grade. I go to Bertola Elementary School. My house means family. It means warmth and love.
There's no better expression of what home means than from the words of a child. So what I'd like to do now is talk a little bit about what's happening in San Mateo County. So San Mateo County is actually facing an unprecedented crisis in affordable housing. By any standard, we're one of the most expensive places to live in the country. One in five families can't currently afford their housing situation, and 2,100 people sleep homeless each night. That's up 12% since 2012, 2011, when we did our last homeless count. 211, which is the United Way's service line to call for referrals, takes more referrals for housing-related issues than any other issue. Thirty-six percent of their calls come for housing-related services. The next closest thing is food insecurity, and that's only at 10%, so by 26% more calls than for anything else. The Section 8 shelter waitlists, I mean the Section 8 waitlist are closed for the most part. There is a list of interests that's open, but basically the wait to get into Section 8 housing is about eight years, and the shelters also have long waitlists, and they're very complicated to get into a shelter at this point. There's been an increased demand for rental housing that's been fueled by the foreclosure crisis. So not only did people who owned homes get forced out of their homes and into the rental market, but people who rented homes that were foreclosed on or apartments that had been foreclosed on also were forced into the rental market. As a result, we've seen increasing rent rates go up ever since 2007, and right now, a one-bedroom apartment in this county is $2,100 on average. The occupancy rate in this county is also 97%, so that means that even if you can't afford a place to live, you probably can't find it. We've seen a loss of middle-income families as more earning $200,000 and above go up, meaning the income disparity is growing in this county. Realignment, investors buying rental properties and pushing the prices up, the growing distribution of income, the growing gap in income, and the slow recovery for those at the lowest levels of the economy has really caused what we are truly calling a crisis in affordable housing. There's also a misconception about job growth. We are definitely going to have job growth, and we're going to have a lot of job growth, but not all of it's going to be high-tech, high-paying. The majority of jobs that are going to be coming to San Mateo County are going to be in the service industry, paying $50,000 or less. As a result, what we're going to see is that EMTs, teachers, sales folks, bank tellers, all aren't going to be able to afford to live here. On average, any one of those, if you start with a schoolteacher, you can see the graph there, they make just under $70,000. In order to be able to afford even a $1,900 apartment, it's going to be, you have to make about $83,000. So what we see is there just isn't enough housing and enough affordable housing. We've also seen a major funding decrease in how we get affordable housing created, really tying the hands of most municipalities. So between the demise of the redevelopment agencies, which most people thought those were, you know, the big funders of downtowns and stadiums, well, they were also the primary funder for affordable housing development and programs. So we've seen a billion dollars in losses to affordable housing programs throughout the state in the loss of RDAs. The HUD cuts to CDBG grant funding has meant about a 51% decrease in funding available for housing right now. Sequestration, the Palmer decision, which was the decision that, as at the state level, that says that you can no longer require inclusionary housing, that it's, you really have to be cautious to do that. So most cities are not requiring developers any longer to provide affordable units when they do new development. That, and then the final blow to the housing funding cycle was the community foundations. So the Silicon Valley Community Foundation announced over the summer that they will no longer fund safety net services. So as of 2014, all housing and food-oriented agencies no longer receive funding. We lost $50,000. Shelter Network lost $125,000. Second Harvest Food Bank lost about $200,000. So between Santa Clara and San Mateo County, 32 agencies were affected by that decision by the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. So what does that mean? It means people have to live pretty far away in order to be able to work here. We have about 184,000 people that commute into the county every day, creating traffic issues, and for those at the lowest income and lowest earning levels, it's just not sustainable. If you're making minimum wage and you're living far away, you're spending likely about 70% of your income on housing and transportation. It's not sustainable. So what ends up happening is that you're going to end up, because we have an affordable housing shortfall, we're going to end up with workforce shortfalls as well. And who's hit hardest? Of course, those at the lowest income levels and seniors and those with disabilities. So as a result, we have to use what we have much more efficiently, and that's where HIP Housing comes in. We've been here since 1972. We have three programs, all of them utilize existing housing stock to create new affordable housing: home sharing, self-sufficiency, and property development. Since 1972, we've helped 66,000 people to find housing-related referrals and services. We've actually placed almost 20,000 people in housing. Each year, currently we're placing about 1,400 people in affordable housing. 700 of those are in our home sharing program, another 450 in our properties, and 250 in our self-sufficiency program. We fielded about 3,000 calls. We're actually tracking at about 3,300 calls this year for housing-related services, but the primary thing is we really look for creative ways to create affordable housing. Home sharing, one of our premier programs, partners those who have space in their home with those who need a place to live, thus turning an existing house into a new affordable housing option. The average home share is going to spend about $600, between $600 and $800 for rent, so when you compare that to $2,100 for a one-bedroom apartment, it becomes one of the only affordable options available. We provide criminal background checks, we do income verification, we put together lengthy living-together agreements for our seniors in home sharing. We do quarterly follow-up calls so that we make sure that everybody understands the relationship and that, to try and ensure that the relationships are successful. We have one of the largest home sharing programs in the nation. We have the only one on the peninsula. Santa Clara County had a small one. It closed this year. There isn't one in San Francisco. There's a small one on the East Bay, but for the most part, we're at, we work with about 1,900 people a year. Like I said, the average rent is somewhere between $600 and $800. We provide professional long-term case management, and we're sponsored by private foundations, donors, the County Department of Housing, 18 of the 21 municipalities, including San Bruno. You've been long supporters of our home sharing program, and we so appreciate that. Home sharing is good for everyone, right? It creates community. It can partner a senior with a student. It can partner someone from San Bruno with someone from Milbrae or San Mateo. It creates community. It's cross, it benefits every community in the county, and it is an immediate way to address the risk of homelessness. Many of our clients now, 80% more than we had even four years ago, are now either homeless or at risk of homelessness as a result of not being able to find housing in the county. There are about 60 home sharing programs internationally, 70 programs throughout the U.S. We've consulted with most of those and set up because we do have a very intensive database and the model program throughout the county. We've been featured on CBS Evening News. Oprah actually featured us in one of her programs. Jackie Speer is a strong supporter of us. Her parents were actually home providers at one point, and then local news has covered us. In fact, we were just interviewed yesterday by the Silicon Valley Business Times. Self-sufficiency, our second program, is a welfare-to-work program, one of the top seven in the state. For families who have children, who are low-income, who want to break their cycle of poverty, this program provides housing scholarships and long-term case management, life skills workshop, and housing placement opportunities. Basically, we allow people to focus on school. They have to have an identifiable school goal or educational goal. We help them meet those goals by providing the housing and the tools that they need in order to create a sustainable life. It's one of our most successful programs. 100% of the graduates report better housing situation when they leave the program. The average increase in income is about 81%, and 90% report more better management skills. That's one of the things we really focus on in our workshops and skills-based learning. And the other thing is that all of them come out with about $1,300 in savings, and these are all folks who were literally referred from shelters or at risk of homelessness that had nothing when they came into the program. So that's pretty substantial. Finally, we own 14 properties throughout the county. Our newest acquisition was in Menlo Park. East Menlo Park is the first piece of affordable rental housing to go into Menlo Park in 25 years. It was a 12-unit complex, now home to four veteran families, two self-sufficiency families, and a variety of other low-income. So we do our property development by finding properties that are already in decay or in decline. We partner with the city, with the county, and with private funders to go and rehab them and make them permanently affordable housing. Our work in San Bruno, so in 20, our fiscal year, you know, crosses over two years, probably much like yours, but in 1213, we took 98 calls from San Bruno. We interviewed 104 people who either work or live in the city of San Bruno. 13 participated in home sharing and two participated in self-sufficiency. That's just for that year. This year, we've had a 19% increase in clients applying to home sharing that live or work in the city of San Bruno. So while those numbers reflect what happened that year, currently in total, we have 16 home providers and 16 folks matched here in San Bruno, which means we have 32 people participating in the home sharing program, and we have five self-sufficiency families working here. I am currently working on some language for housing elements, so expect something from me soon in the mail. And I just want to finalize this with a great big, super big thank you because San Bruno has been an amazing partner. We're so grateful for your support of affordable housing, your understanding for the need of it, and we hope that every time you look at this calendar, you'll be reminded not only of our programs, but the hope and the heart and the homes that are HIP Housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Kate. Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Well, Ken?
I got to say, from being a design professional for over 30 years, these kids, you know, are way ahead of what I was, you know, at their age, so.
Try picking them when you, it's so hard to pick.
And I always look forward to getting, I know Bob George is a fellow architect and has always been gracious in getting us a calendar each year, and it's the main calendar I use. But this is the best presentation I've had as far as describing what HIP Housing is about, and as much as it's so desirable to live in this area, I mean, since 1972, you've been constantly behind, I'm sure, and even though we have now focused on affordable housing and we did redevelopment and all, we're still behind. So, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is I appreciate what you're doing, and people just have to realize that it is a never-ending struggle to live in this great area, you know, this great expensive area.
Thank you, Councilmember. It is. It's a wonderful place to live. We just have to figure out how to make it good for everybody. Because for every one, you know, high-paying, high-tech job, we create five service positions, and that creates the lifestyle that we all want. So being able to house people close to where they work is key to keeping a lifestyle that we all want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Kate, thank you very much for your presentation. I think my colleague summarized it with all the work that you do and the efforts, and of course, we want to thank Mr. and Mrs. March and April. Kendall and Kyle, thank you for leading us in the pledge tonight, and thank you very much for reading us your statement, and a good job. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, again, thank you. Review of the agenda. A few things. We had a closed session. We began, and it was in regards to labor negotiations. We're going to be continuing that item at the end of the meeting under closed session. Also, a couple other items. We obviously are fortunate to have our presentation for our annual today from Tom and Jessica, and so we'd like to know if we can, if it's okay with the council to move item 11 up to after public hearings. It's the first thing. Two, also with Irene's absence, we'd like to go ahead and postpone her report on, that she had at the Pipeline Safety Trust Conference. We'll bring it on the 28th. If that's okay. And also, there's been a request from staff on, under Conduct of Business, item A, to have that postponed. I don't know, or move to the 28th. Connie, did you want to say anything on that, or?
Just simply to request that that item be pulled and rescheduled for the 28th so that staff can provide additional information in the written staff report to inform and prepare the city council for what we consider to be an important decision on the building and fire codes.
Are my colleagues okay with all three of those changes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and have that done, and we'll go and move on to the approval of the minutes. Special City Council Closed Session Minutes of November the 26th and December the 10th, 2013, and City Council Minutes of November the 26th, December 3rd, and the 10th of 2013. Are there any additions, corrections to those minutes? Not? Standard is approved. Thank you, Carol. Onto Conduct of Business, I mean, I'm sorry, Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine and implemented on earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent?
If not, I move to accept.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimous, thank you. There are no public hearings. We'll go ahead and move up the annual report at this time, if you're ready. So at this time, we're going to ask the Chair, Barnes Lopez, to receive the annual report from the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. All yours.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am presenting for a review of 2013 and a little bit of what we're planning to do in 2014. You'll see, of course, I'm the Chair. Mark Howard is my vice chair. Our members are Eric Wood, Tom Hamilton, and Tim Ross. Our staff support, Clara Fabry, Joseph Servantes, Tim Mann, and Troy Frye will be our new police Our responsibilities are to review and recommend actions to the city council involving traffic calming, parking, and local traffic issues. We review policies and programs affecting traffic and parking for final city council action. This includes parking restriction applications, which we adopted in 2010, the traffic calming toolkit, adopted in 2011, and the crosswalk installation guidelines, which were adopted just this past year in 2013. We've held public meetings to engage the community. We've done mailers, city website, city staff contact info, monthly public meetings. This year, we had 41 residents and business owners attend our meetings. In the past year, we were able to conduct analysis of traffic conditions around Parkside Intermediate School during the drop-off and pickup hours. This includes Genovin Avenue, Cedar Avenue, Hawthorne Avenue, and Niles Avenue frontage. Also, we've done traffic analysis at El Crystal Elementary School and San Bruno Avenue-West Crestmore Drive intersection. Traffic calming this year, we've met with a lot of communities, a lot of neighborhoods: Cedar Avenue, Cortland Drive, 7th Avenue, College Drive, Commodore Drive, Cypress Avenue, Oak Avenue, and Colby Way. Items acted on by city council the past year were the installation of new stop signs at Angus Avenue in Huntington, Angus at First, and San Mateo Avenue at Huntington. We've also made some improvements to San Bruno City Park, which, you know, I am just so excited for. We now have the area near the tennis courts marked a little better, especially in time for Little League season. Everybody's been using that path as a crosswalk, so now we have some markings just to let the drivers know that there are people crossing there. We did a lot of work with Shelter Creek this year because we did have to implement the street sweeping signs over in Shelter Creek. It was to include them in a, in the signage we've already had throughout the city, but this was a lengthy process where we had to deal with no parking restrictions, coordination with the Shelter Creek Homeowners Association, and eventually getting the street signage out for the street sweeping program. We've had some improvements at Niles Avenue, installation of high-visibility markings, school crossings and school zone signs, installation of red no parking zones on the north side of Niles Avenue to enhance the children's safety. For 2014, we're looking to use those applicable adopted policies for parking restrictions, stop signs, and traffic calming. Also, we'll be participating in the development of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and we're looking to conduct a parking study for San Mateo Avenue, north of San Bruno Avenue as all the changes go through. Also, we mentioned earlier that we are now getting that city contact information out there more to the public, so of course, if you have any traffic issues, you can call the Department of Public Services or send an email through the hyperlink on our website. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything comments, council? Ken?
Well, each year that the report is given, I respect it even more because this was my beginning on Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, and it's never-ending, isn't it? There's always something, and I can't imagine the things that you are reviewing year after year now because it was just red curvings and stop signs when I sat on the board. But I really appreciate everything that you've done, and as the city has changed and as we get a great separation, and that whole area is going to change, you'll have your hands full in 2014 also.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Once again, as Ken and Michael, and for the council and the staff in the city, thank you for all your efforts and your work, and please take that back to the committee. There'll be more, as Ken mentioned, coming down as we embark upon this new year, so, but once again, thank you to all of you for everything that you do.
Thank you. We're proud to do it.
Public comments on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing and/or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Robert.
Robert Rico, I'm here with two quickies. The shortest one, this Friday, John Muir is doing their fourth anniversary blood drive at Lenardi's Market. It's in recognition of the fire and explosion, and the last I heard, they were a little short on pre-registration, so you don't have to pre-register. Walk-ins are available 10 to 2 in the Lenardi's parking lot, Crestmore and, or not Crestmore, the next block up from Crestmore and San Bruno Avenue. The other hat I'm wearing tonight is I'm on the committee with Councilmember Ibera. We are working for Relay for Life San Bruno 2014 at Cappuccino High School. The main 24-hour event that finalizes everything is Saturday, Sunday, April 26th and 27th. To get more information, to volunteer, et cetera, you can email us at sanbrunorelay@gmail.com. That's sanbrunorelay@gmail.com. We are also finalizing our kickoff event for Wednesday, February 5th, 6 to 9, at the Ruck Center. Among other things, there will be a free hot dog dinner, and we're going to have a very uplifting presentation by a cancer person. Everyone is welcome, obviously, to both of those, and we'll keep you advised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to Conduct of Business. We'll be at item B. Adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to submit applications to the San Mateo County Transportation Measure A Pedestrian and Bicycle Grant Program 4. Three items here. El Camino Real Angus Avenue Intersection Improvements, pedestrian circulation improvements, alternative analysis, as well as alternatives feasibility assessments of Bay Shore Circle Medium Improvements.
Honorable Vice Mayor, councilmembers, in December, the Transportation Authority for San Mateo County issued a call for a project for pedestrian and bicycle improvement projects. This call for project would use, the Pedestrian and Bicycle Grant Program will use Measure A funds and is assigned a total of $5.4 million at this time for this grant program. The city council set expectation and directed staff to seek outside funding opportunity whenever it is feasible to further the policy objectives of the city and to achieve policy priorities and objectives. Staff evaluated these known policy objectives and priorities stated by the city council against eligibility for this grant application, and is proposing three projects which met this requirement, the requirement of eligibility for the grant application, and also met the priority of the city council. Those three projects are the pedestrian circulation improvement between the crossing and Temfor. the crossing and Tan Fran, the connectivity improvement at Bay Shore Circle, and the Angus The pedestrian connectivity improvement between the crossing and Tan Fran was included as a objective in the special plan developed for the U.S. Navy site, and also was included in the redevelopment implementation plan, and also in our capital improvement plan. In our capital improvement plan, this project is not funded, and that's a reason for our recommendation to apply for this outside funding opportunity. Is very limited knowledge at this time about this project. Wasn't any design work done. The vision and the objective stated in those policy document is to improve the pedestrian connectivity between, between the crossings and also shopping opportunities at Tan Fran, and also to improve the access and the connectivity with the Bart Station, the transit hub at that location. Now, with the development of the hotel side, this improvement will be even more timely and relevant. The City Council also set expectation to improve Bay Shore Circle, and this would be on other opportunity to analyze if could be improved the connectivity between this east side residential and commercial neighborhood with the end of the regional trail, which ends close to that location to the north, also with the Bart Transit Hub across from Huntington, and also the transit corridor itself to the south. Again, how is in the case of the other project, this funding request is recommended for feasibility analysis just to analyze what type of connectivity improvement could be implemented at this location, and also the funding would support any environmental assessment of the site for those alternative users and connectivity type of project. The third project is the intersection improvement at Angus. In our general plan and also in our transit corridor plan is emphasized the pedestrian, the improvement of the pedestrian experience, including through the El Camino corridor. Also, in the Grand Boulevard Initiative, the whole concept is based on enhancing the pedestrian and bicycle experience throughout the whole corridor. In addition to those three, three policy documents, also you supported, and the city developed up to thirty-five percent design as a complete street case study, designing, focusing on corridor improvement between, on El Camino between San Bruno and Sylvan. At the presentation at that time, you requested and staff made the commitment that with any grant opportunity, if not for the whole project, or say whole, staff will seek outside funding whenever it is feasible, even for portion of, to implement portion of that project. The intersection of Angus is a section of that project, and the reason why was chosen this intersection is the high civic interest with the library at that location, and also access and connection to the school close to that intersection, and heavy school traffic at that location also. If this were, these are the staff recommendation at, at this time, if you support this recommendation, then staff will submit the grant application on seventeen of this month. Then, is the expectation to have a final decision on the application sometime in April, and then the next time when you would see this item would be brought back for your consideration would be in the second part of this year with consultant support award for those projects which were successful in this application process. I am available for any question.
Thank you, Clara. Ken?
Clara, thank you. As, as the city's representative on the CCAG Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I could tell you firsthand that we've, we've done very well with these grants, and I believe the transit corridor plan was actually, had a grant from the TA a couple years ago. Most recently, in October, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan was funded by TDA Article III Funding, hundred thousand dollars. And unfortunately, the Angus project was proposed then also, but the pool of money was a lot smaller. It was one point four million. I was just checking my records, so, and we, we placed sixth, ninth out of fifteen, and only six projects were funded. So, I believe it's, the Angus project is, is very important. I think it will get, I can't say because the TA is a different governing board, a selection board than the CCAG BPAC, so I don't know if I'll be able to look at it. So, this point, and I know that the TA is very receptive to studies, and, you know, the Belmont Pedestrian Bridge was heavily funded by the TA. The bridge, pedestrian bridge that doesn't go over El Camino goes over one-on-one. So, and that was a major undertaking. So, I think the pedestrian bridge to Tan Fran is, is a good project. I, I would be cautious about the Bay Shore, Bay Shore Circle. Just, and I, and all I can say is, when we're, when we're judging these projects, is that how do they, how do they follow the goals and the initiatives of the, of the grant funding? So, if we follow the rules and make a good case, then we should do well. Five point four million dollars sounds like a lot, but depending on the many cities that apply, and there are many cities, and some of them are a million dollars. So, and some of them are half a million dollars. So, it doesn't go that far.
Councilmember, I, I did forgot to mention that for this grant application, each agency can apply for up to three projects, and the limit, the dollar limit for each agency is one million dollars.
Yeah. And I'd just like to restate, I mean, we are recognized as a municipality that is ahead of the game, and, you know, we're, we're aggressive, we plan well, and we have good, good viable projects, and the committees and the, the boards that are reviewing our projects, you know, they prove that by, by funding them. So, we're up against bigger cities, and I, I compliment staff and wish them well in getting the application together.
Thank you. I, I had a quick question. I, I noticed in here that there is a ten percent matching funds provision for these grants, and I was just wondering if, if we are fortunate enough to get these, have we identified that funding source at this point?
Maybe it's not clear in the fiscal impact portion. Is no matching fund requirement for this grant, for any of this. It's a waiting criteria, the matching fund, how they will rate those projects and how successful they will be, and that waiting criteria that they are, is assigned a ten percent advantage for those project who has matching funds included in this application.
I see. And so, our proposal will not include any matching funds?
It is, at this time, was not proposed by us, any matching fund to include in our grant application. I must say, like, all of the Measure A grant funds does not cover overhead costs. That will be a very, very small dollar amount of overhead cost. They, they cover staff time, direct cost. They are not covering overhead cost, but that is a very small cost for these projects.
Okay. That, that makes sense. Thank you for clarifying.
If it's your desire, that's, is the intent of tonight's presentation. If you are recommending including local match, wasn't our recommendation, but certainly is your decision to make.
City Manager Jackson?
I just wanted to add, in response to Councilmember Ibera, first of all, your insight is echoed by staff and, and very much a benefit to the city that you have the participation and the insight about these programs. Bay Shore Circle in particular was included by staff, and again, this is a decision that it's the city councils to make, and so with your evaluation of the competitive potential of this program, we would, we would, we, we just simply respectfully submit these items for your consideration, recognizing that the Bay Shore Circle project, as you've picked up on, may not be quite as competitive in the grander scheme of things for a couple of reasons. One being that typically, grant providers look for projects that are relatively well along in the planning and development process. This project, as it's proposed, is not, although we thought it was a good opportunity to leverage grant funds for an important policy objective, as the Director indicated previously in her report. So, again, it's, we present it to you primarily in recognition of the city's interests, and this simply as an opportunity, and, and as you well know, we, we can make no guarantees about the ultimate success.
Of course. And if I could respond to that, yes. I see a lot of potential in the Bay Shore Circle because, you know, you've got some political ties here. We've got some people, you know, you look at, you know, who's going to be making the decisions, and we have, you know, we have a Bart, Bart Station, we have, you know, we have a regional shopping center close by. We actually have a neighboring city's walking park that is very close to it. So, and we have, we have bicycle, bicycle routes in the area too. So, by all means, you know, we take a stab at it. As far as, to my colleague's question about the matching funds, again, it's an application process, and I know San Bruno has scored well in the past on different types of grant proposals based on a matching fund. If it's a point total, if it's something that they get scored by points, and I've sat next to colleagues that have, you know, that have been scoring, scoring for these, for these projects, and, you know, a city that is proposing a project that is not, not investing anything into it is not looked that favorably on. So, I think if we have the funding source, if we have the money to, you know, to ingest into the, insert into the project, I think, and if it looks, and if it fits into the application process, by all means, I think it's something not only on the scoring point, but also the perception of who's, you know, who's judging these projects.
If that were the case, in looking to show some, shall we say, investment, as Councilmember Salazar asked, where, where would those funds come from?
Would, would be probably staff recommendation to use our own Measure A funds to include in the application as matching fund, and just a recommendation on the table was mentioned, the ten percent, if it's, do you think would be a higher chance, and if you desire to include a, I am just offering that, ten percent, just to show, would be then my recommendation to include at least ten percent in our application as matching fund to show our commitment and interest in the project itself. And those Measure A funds, last time, if I remember, is around one point one or one point two million unassigned Measure A funds available for the city right now, and that would be my recommendation. Yes.
Other questions?
Through the Chair, yeah. Just wanted to pick Ken's brain. So, in terms of what you've seen with, with other proposals, what sort of percentages are generally proposed by cities that makes them attractive to the approving?
Well, it's hard, it's, it, it's, it's hard to say because we have two agencies that are judging this, and we got a good taste of it last year, or I believe the year before, when the TA and CCAG were, you know, TDA and, and the TA funds were combined. And I think it was, it was a unique case because there wasn't a large pool of one of the funds, and so we combined it. But it, it still, there was still a division of who was going to judge what, and who was going, how they were going to judge, and how we were going to judge. And we had a scoring sheet, and we've worked on it, and we've tried to perfect it and refine it and, and be fair. I can't speak for the TA on how they judge. I'd like to think that they do well because we've benefited from, from their scoring. So, all I can say is that, I mean, I can help, help staff in reviewing the grant application and look at how, how they're, how they possibly would be scoring, you know, and, and give them that, that assistance. But, I, I mean, I, I have been there when, when there's been zero. There've been, you know, zero, zero matching funds, and it's been sort of frowned upon.
So, what's the pleasure of the council in regards to the matching funds and, on this item?
Well, I mean, the ten percent number I had read erroneously. It's, it's a weighting factor, not an actual contribution amount. So, I don't know if that, if the ten percent is, is adequate. Would we want to do more than that? I'm not sure. That's why I wanted to get a better feel for what is, what's considered enough skin in the game to make this an attractive proposal. But without any consideration, and, I mean, we, we have funds available. I don't know if we want to, I don't know how well-equipped we are to make a decision on how much should be contributed, so I, I don't want that to impede any progress on submitting these.
Because you did say they, they need to be submitted by the seventeenth, correct?
Correct.
So, we're under a time.
I just will say that I think ten percent, that would be around, around eighty thousand for the total matching fund for the three project would show commitment on the agency's part, and would be funding available from our Measure A funds. And you want to make that decision tonight, then that will be incorporated in the application.
It's a pleasure, Council.
I think I'd be willing to support that if, if Ken feels it's going to help us.
I, I believe it, I believe it is. If it is stated within the grant proposal that ten percent is what is the ability of agencies, I'm, I, I would guarantee that there's going to be competing agencies that will have that ten percent in there. So, I believe we should be right there with them. So, if that's the case, I, I'll introduce the resolution and let, let them make their applications.
We have three separate resolutions?
I have three separate resolutions.
You want to take them separately, or can we?
I would like to take them separately.
I'd like to introduce Resolution A. I'd like to introduce Resolution A for the El Camino and Angus intersection improvements.
And if you could amend the resolution to include the 10% matching fund?
As stated, with 10% matching funds. Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDeven.
Aye.
I'd like to introduce Resolution B, submit an application for the Tanfran pedestrian circulation improvements and include a 10% matching fund.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDeven.
Aye.
Finally, Resolution C, submit an application for a alternative feasibility assessment of Bay Shore Circle median improvements with a 10% matching fund.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDeven.
Aye. Thank you. All right, Item C, adopt resolution authorizing the purchase of computer automated dispatch and records management system software from Sunridge Systems in the amount of $450,000. Chief?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Bear with me one minute while I get up my power presentation. As you've heard in this year's presentation of the capital improvement budget, the police department is proposing a replacement of our current records management and computer automated dispatch software in order to take advantage of the latest advances in technology and to be compatible with other law enforcement agencies in San Mateo County. So the department maintains all, maintains all of its records related to calls for service, police records, and our records management database. And it's commonly referred to as an RMS system. All of the information in that database is transmitted to our officers in the field via computer automated dispatch software, and that's commonly referred to as a CAD. These two systems are linked together, and they're also linked to the other law enforcement databases that we use when we provide police service to the community. Bear with me here. Our current system is 14 years old, and it does not allow staff to take advan, advantage of the advances that have been made in technology. There are police records management software products on the market that will automatically populate reports and data, which is currently being done by our staff at the department. We've been aware of a records management program that's offered by Sunridge Systems. We're aware of this because the only, there's only six agencies in San Mateo County that do not use Sunridge Systems product. We're one of those six. Of those six that do not use Sunridge in San Mateo County, all of them are currently either going to that system or they're looking to make proposals to go to that system. So on, on the screen right now is, just to give you an idea of Sunridge Systems. Sunridge System is the largest provider of records management software and computer automated dispatch software in the state of California. They also have a, a strong reputation for providing a quality product that is not, that is cost effective. The reason why we're considering Sunridge Systems is again, because everybody in San Mateo County is either going to it or uses it. The value of having the same CAD and RMS system in, with our partners in San Mateo County is the sharing of information for crime analysis purposes. So right now, if I have a green vehicle that's used in a burglary and I check green vehicle burglary and San Bruno's records, I only check San Bruno records. With RIMS, and if I'm connected to the other agencies in San Mateo County, I check all of their records. So I'll be able to pull up if there's a green vehicle used in a burglary in Atherton or in Daly City or in San Bruno. It provides us a valuable crime analysis tool. And I get a greater result because I've searched all of those records. The District Attorney's Office is also considering RIMS. And the advantage of doing that is right now, we take all of our police reports, they're physically carried, when they're presented for a presentation to the District Attorney's Office, we physically carry those reports down to the DA's office. Because of budget cuts in the DA's office, we have to go to Redwood City. We share that task with other agencies in San Mateo County now. When the District Attorney's Office goes to RIMS, we'll be able to submit all of our cases electronically and take advantage of technology. The RIMS product provides electronic report writing software, so the officers will write the reports in the cars, they will electronically send that to a supervisor, the supervisor reviews it, approves it electronically, and once that report's approved, it'll begin to populate fields that we use for Department of Justice statistics. Currently, right now, we, we print out a report, we carry that report to a records clerk when it's been approved, and they go ahead and enter all of that information into our records management system. So as you can see, technology with RIMS software will make us a little more efficient. RIMS has a, a component that we've been asked a lot about from our citizens, and I'm going to try and demonstrate that for you right now. So bear with me here. RIMS has Citizen RIMS as part of its presentation and their software. And it allows you to, allows a citizen to go online and check crime activity in their neighborhood. So I just happened to pull up Atherton Police Department right now and just to demonstrate how the system works. So I can cursor over a particular flag and find out what it was. So in this case, it was an alarm response. Doesn't give the street address, it gives it by block, and we will set all of the parameters of what information is released so we don't violate any confidentiality. But as you can see, it's a valuable tool. You can look to the left where you can see crime, missing persons, stolen vehicles. Again, you set the chart to what you want to release. It'll search last, it'll search one day, it'll search seven days. It also has the capability of giving live time information. And then you can see the types of calls on the right-hand side of the screen, what the system provides. But this is just one component of the records management system offered by Sunridge. Another advantage and another component of the system is it allows you to, bear with me here. It allows you to, it offers an online reporting link to CopLogic. And what CopLogic is, it's an electronic software database that allows citizens to report electronically crimes and other information to police departments. Now, we also have a component right now that was conducted and set up by some of our staff. What CopLogic is, CopLogic gives you a little more variety of, of information. It allows the citizens to go online and report a variety of other topics that we haven't listed, and I'm going to get you that right now. So on this slide here, it's, and I know it's hard to see, but I'm just showing it as an example. You can go online right now to San Bruno, go onto our police department website, under online services, and you can report information to the police department. We average about 12 reports a month, and it's, it's advantageous in two ways. One, it makes it easy for our citizens to report incidents to the police department. Two, it saves officers and allows them to continue patrol rather than spend upwards hour, half hour, taking a report where there's no suspect information. Now, anytime a citizen reports an incident to us and they have suspect information, we obviously contact them and send an officer out to take more detailed information. CopLogic, well, RIMS software offers a link to CopLogic. And I just showed you this again as a demonstration point. It says, it has even an animal complaint, a bullying incident, a code enforcement violation. CopLogic will give us a little more variety in what a citizen can choose to report. Over 100 agencies, including several agencies in San Mateo County, use CopLogic. And the advantage of CopLogic is if you approve the RIMS software, once the citizen report is approved by a supervisor, it's automatically populated into the records management system. Currently, when we receive an electronic report from a citizen, we go ahead and, and a, a police clerk enters that information into our record system. So again, it's making us a little more efficient. Switching to the Sunridge Systems would provide compatibility with other law enforcement dispatch centers, and it's beneficial when exploring opportunities and expanded partnerships. So you took some action recently, last year, when you authorized us to connect our nine-on-one system with Burlingame Police. What that does is, in an emergency, if we're overwhelmed or they're overwhelmed, each center can respond and assist because they have compatible nine-on-one systems. Burlingame is also looking at going to Sunridge RIMS system. And as you have also heard, grand jury, a recent grand jury report in San Mateo County recommended that law enforcement agencies look at consolidating police dispatch centers. What we've, and what you've approved is, we've essentially created a virtual dispatch center with Burlingame and San Bruno, something that, that hasn't been done in San Mateo County. So we're kind of on a leading edge. Because Burlingame is looking at Sunridge RIMS, it gives us the opportunity to recognize some cost savings. So that cost savings would be approximately $119,000 from the purchase price if we were to do a standalone model. Now, on your staff report, it initially had 78,000 was the cost savings. We got a recent updated quote from Sunridge Systems, and that changed to 119,000 because we took out a data conversion component. We may recognize some additional cost savings because we're going to do joint training and share other portions as the system, if it's approved, as the system gets implemented. The replacement cost for the computer automated dispatch and records management software from Sunridge Systems is quoted at 511,000 for a standalone San Bruno model and 392,000 if we shared with Burlingame. The estimate from Sunridge includes one-time software costs and annual maintenance cost of 52,000 for a standalone and 42,000 for a shared system. Now, it's important to know that we have budgeted for annual maintenance of our computer automated dispatch and records management software. Currently, that figure is at 45,000, and Sunridge is within what we already expend for our current system. Additional costs for the computer automated dispatch and records management replacement, not associated with Sunridge, is upgrades to our mobile computers in the cars because some of those are older computers, we haven't budgeted for those replacements, and we need systems that are current, that will run the current software. Additional costs include a data storage and communication server, Windows site license costs, document scanners. So we're essentially, if RIMS is approved, we're going to go paperless. We're going to have to purchase scanners because there's other paper and other documents that are associated with providing police service, and we'll be able to scan those in, and then they'll get electronically stored with our reports. So we estimate non-RIMS associated costs at 50,000, and we're recommending the purchasing the shared system with the city of Burlingame. If we were to consider a CopLogic, which is the online reporting system, that would add an additional 14,900 to the cost. So the cost of CopLogic is 11,000 with 5,000 annual maintenance. CopLogic would give a multi-jurisdiction discount of 10%, which would reduce the software cost to 9,900, and again, annual maintenance at 5,000. The shared system recognizes cost savings. It contributes to shared services with allied agencies. It allows us to potentially partner with anybody else who is a RIMS user and again recognize potential cost savings. And it will not impact operations. If we wanted to do a standalone model, we would just simply have to go back, purchase additional software, and then we would be able to be standalone. But again, going, being compatible with all the agencies in San Mateo County, the District Attorney's Office, it would obviously aid in crime apprehension. Having components such as the Citizen RIMS portion of it will meet our citizens' demand of having access to crime information in their neighborhoods. And again, partnering would recognize the cost savings. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions to the chief, Ken or Michael?
Thank you. Yeah, a few quick questions. And I'll start by thanking you for that, for that report because I was kind of checking off the questions I had as you went through there because you actually answered a lot of the questions I had.
You mentioned at one point that the additional reduction was due to the fact that conversion service was removed. And I'm wondering, for legacy data, any data that we currently have stored in our, in our legacy system, what is the plan for that information and how do we move that into the new system?
So it's an excellent question, and agencies have done it two different ways. Pacifica Police Department recently went to the, the Sunridge RIMS system, and their data conversion costs, I believe, and, and this is just a, from my memory, it was in upwards of $40,000 to convert that data. We're still, and Burlingame is still going to maintain a server with our current records management system. So our thought is to, rather than spend that extra money on converting that data, what we would do is we would maintain our current system, our current data, and we would take our top 100 calls to start with, our top 100 locations. And then we would begin to convert that data and enter that into the new system. So it would be cost savings, it would be done when our staff has downtime, and it would be done over time while still maintaining our old database. Because, you're right, we, we need to maintain that historical record.
So what does that do to our ongoing support? Are we going to have to pay for software support on the old system? Or are we basically not maintaining that system? And are there going to be operational costs, you know, basic care and feeding of two systems now?
So we're going to, we were current, and we have paid through our current system through the year. The plan is, if approved, we're going to work with that vendor to try and get a reduced maintenance cost to see what it would cost us to do that. And then evaluate it at that point to say, is it worth maintaining that or do we look at conversion? But it is not anywhere near the cost of what it is now. I, I wouldn't recommend that we pay 45,000 or 90,000 in software maintenance costs. Now, I am familiar with Millbrae, and when Millbrae converted, they still, then they maintained a database with their old system. They didn't convert the data. And I believe the cost was marginal, somewhere in the $5,000 range, to maintain the old system software. And that's to maintain it if something goes wrong. The data and the information is ours, it's not going to go anywhere. So even if we, we choose to forego the maintenance, we're still going to have the data and that data availability.
Okay. In terms of, you mentioned there's a lot of tasks that get eliminated. Was there any estimate made of, of possible cost reduction to the department by eliminating some of the data entry and those sort of functions? Is that, do we have any idea of if there are?
As, as you know, we are very lean, and we looked at it as, in terms of, not so much as a cost savings, but more of an ability to provide more, to, to focus that extra time in other service areas.
Okay. And in our consent calendar, we, we approved $80,000 for support on the existing system. I believe half of that was budgeted, half was, was due, came from a staff savings. And that's why I was kind of poking into the, the staff savings things because ongoing, I'm wondering, is this going to be a more expensive system to maintain? I mean, you mentioned the, the licensing costs, the ongoing licensing costs for the software, but I, I'm assuming that a more complicated system is going to require more support, not software licensing, but actual, somebody, an IT person that's responsible for maintaining this thing?
An excellent question. One of the advantages of the Sunridge system is it is very user-friendly. So it is very So it is very easy to run reports, to run crime analysis, to come up with crime maps, to do a lot of different functions. It is easier than our current system. Our current system requires quite a bit of technical support. I don't believe that we're going to, and, let me back up a little bit, those agencies that use Sunridge have not reported any issues. So they have not reported any increase in the use of IT. In fact, it's probably a decrease. And I anticipate that we're not going to see that much of an increase. I mean, certainly, there's going to be a learning curve with our officers and our dispatch and our record staff. But once that is reached, and once that is met, I don't anticipate an increase. In fact, I anticipate possibly a decline in the use of IT for RIMS. And the advantage of partnering with Burlingame is the same system, so we can look at sharing IT as we go forward. Now, that's not to say that other IT areas, such as in-car cameras and mobile computers in the cars, and all of that other, won't create a demand. But in terms of the records management software, I don't anticipate an increase.
Okay. But there is a possibility that that could be offset by maintaining the legacy system, which I imagine might need more attention as time moves on, as it gets older?
That's possible, yes.
Okay. And my last question was just around training. I know that there's a lot of training that's provided in this contract, and I was just wondering if there was any thought given to, you know, how the officers would be trained, schedules, how those schedules would be worked out, how intensive that training would be, what we expect the learning curve to be, and if we plan to do any sort of train the trainer type exercises, so that going forward as new officers come onboard, there's somebody available to get them up to speed?
So that's exactly what we plan to do now. If approved, and if we go to the shared with Burlingame, we're going to do joint training. It's going to be primarily a train the trainer. The learning curve for the officers is going to be shorter, obviously, because of the use is going to be less than what our dispatchers do. But we don't anticipate a large learning curve, and we don't, we haven't heard from other agencies that use RIMS on that, that it's been a tremendous learning curve. Again, the advantage of the same system throughout the county is, we can pull from a variety of different agents to say, hey, can you come in here and help us learn this one task, or how do you do this? And again, you know, from experience, San Mateo County helps each other out. So I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Ken?
I should have gone first. No, no, nothing, because I, I mean, I just have some, it's a great system, it's described as a great system, you've portrayed it as a great system, and I wish the department well in utilizing it. But, I mean, you have to realize, I've sat up here and approved so many transitions, so many new programs, new softwares, new computer systems and everything. We're talking 14 years, and there's now only six agencies left. So I'm just thinking, was this a, was this a financial issue, where we were just sort of saving our money up to make the plunge into changing? You can answer it or not, but you say that there's six other agencies. I mean, can we make it, can we reduce it more if we get those six other agencies to partner with us?
So, right now, so I'll be more than happy to answer the question.
I mean, the thing is, you know, when I went through it, it's amazing how expensive this stuff is. I mean, it's just, every single item is at least $5,000, you know, and you go right down the line, and that's why it adds up to over, oh, nearly $600,000. And yes, every bit to save is good, but, I mean, there's six other agencies out there who would probably like to have a, you know, share in a discount also.
So when we purchased our system 14 years ago, it was around $200,000 and then another $40,000 for the 911. RIMS is on the lower end of the industry. We did some research and found some agencies paying $9 million for CAD and RMS systems. There is another agency in San Mateo County that's looking at RIMS that's going to pay about a million. In terms of partnering, Burlingame and San Bruno are proposing, because of their virtual dispatch partnership now, they're proposing joining. There is another agency that is looking at joining with us. I know the other agency, another agency is joining with another Sunridge partner that will reduce their cost. You asked if it was a money issue. It was a money issue, especially recently, to replace it. Now it's almost out of necessity, because we would be the only agency that isn't a Sunridge-connected partner, and we would lose that valuable information sharing.
We've been very proactive in keeping up and things, and it just seems that we're late to the party here. So, but I'm glad we're at the party now. I'll vote yes.
So, chief, my understanding then is, obviously, our backup mechanism is that we are jointly with Burlingame. So should something happen to the facility here in San Bruno, Burlingame immediately could take over dispatch and access records and all of that, and vice versa?
Correct.
And your objective is to go to the paperless, which is the scanning, which, if I'm understanding correctly, then obviously, it should be a more real-time, quicker, as stuff is inputted, it can populate data or information it has, should streamline things, and we're hoping, obviously, to take some of those times spent on that and put it into the rest of the department, and being out amongst the community and making more of a difference than we already are.
Exactly. So for example, if the officer is out in the field and writing a report, and there is a shoplift report at Tanfran Mall, the officer writes TA, the field automatically populates Tanfran Mall, it populates all victim information, and searches the database and puts in repetitive information. So it is more efficient, yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Any action for council?
I'll introduce the resolution for a vote.
Councilman Rosalesar?
Aye.
Councilman Barabera?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye. Item number 11, we have taken care of. Item 12, comments from council members? I had a couple things. First and foremost, want to, I was reminded to thank the garden club for the arrangement and for the new year, and the new arrangement, which we'll be having at each of our meetings. Two, it's been on the news about drought, so I don't know if we as a city need to look at that or be prepared. Not that it is here, but obviously, I think tonight, the Sacramento City Council is looking at a possible 30 percent reduction. And obviously, it's been talked about within the governor's office, so I just think we should look to that and be a little proactive or be prepared. Also, just on employee recognition and acknowledgement, I was at the, one of the officers that were sworn in, and I know we've had promotions prior to that in the police. We get a kind of updated information as far as promotions, those that join the organization. And I know within our fire department, we've had a couple of new firefighters that came onboard before Christmas. We have a captain's promotion. I'm also maybe thinking, just so that the organization's consistent, and everybody's offered that same opportunity. I don't know where the threshold mark is, if it's 20 years or 25 years, that any person who wishes to come to be acknowledged doesn't have to, but is at least given that availability. And maybe even at our 10-year mark. I know, just sort of thinking back in my day when I was on staff, 10 years, you certainly did receive something at the office, but maybe even if it's listed in the agenda or something, and just acknowledge. Nowadays, when we start having staff that serves this community and its residents for 10, 15, 20, 25 years, I think it's worth an acknowledgement and a name, and to know. If nothing else, then we are going to go into closed session. We're going to go back into closed session in regards to labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Sections 54957. There is nothing else, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on January 28th, right here at 7 o'clock. And everybody else, have a good and happy, healthy New Year.